Welcome to Tuesday, November 13, 2018, regular Selectmen's meeting. The Selectmen not present today, select from Pendigast in England, is we have the other three Selectmen, the Town Manager, Town Clerk, New Finance Director, and members in the audience from the high school. Welcome. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of our October 23 meeting minutes. Is you and I the only ones that can...
Yeah, so I'll move the minutes as presented.
We need to make one change. Is, I believe, is, I don't remember what page it was, it shows Ken as making a motion or a second.
It's the second. It's item number four, approved minute, meetings from, or meeting minutes from October 9.
It's actually been changed.
And you've changed it in the one we've got in the binder.
Oh, okay.
You can approve on the Thursday.
Well, the two out of the three Selectmen that were there, that is a quorum, isn't it?
Oh, has to be. Has to be. Oh, the full board, right?
Can we just table it?
We'll table it.
Table it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll table that one. Is, that brings us to our first public comment. First public comment is 15 minutes long. If you have a comment, please step to the podium, give us your name and where you live, and address all questions through the chair. No public comment. Is, I do want to make a comment. Is I want to thank Patty and her crew for the election. Is a lot of difficulties, a lot of absentee ballots and early voting, is, but it all went off without a hitch. Is once again, is thank you for your work and your whole crew.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Yes. We have no public hearing. There's reports of committees. Is BCTV does not have anything to report. Did Invision Burwick give you anything, Steve?
Nope.
Nope. That brings us to department reports. The Town Clerk.
So, I will report on the election, since we just got through that, as you said. We actually had a total of 3,104 votes cast. We had 670 absentee requests. Forty of those did not, were not returned, for a total of 630 absentee ballots cast. All the articles passed. The non-binding Cemetery Road got 1,105, to Esterbrook at 1,634. And there were 365 blank votes on that. The other articles passed by quite a good margin. We won't be able to unseal the incoming voter list until tomorrow, once we hear if there's any recalls with the state. So I don't have any other stats, like new voters and stuff like that, until I can open that up. The state, I believe, oh... Okay, most of the questions passed here, except for one, four, and question six, which was the York County referendum. But other than that, everything went smoothly. I couldn't do it without all the volunteers and the election workers, so kudos to them for long, long day. I gave you a printout. This is what I give to Steve every month. It basically breaks down the money that we bring in through my office into categories. You can see the big ones are tax payments and water payments. Everything else is kind of consistent, except for boat registrations and snowmobile switches out. And you can see the big months are when real estate tax payments are due and water bills are due. But it just kind of gives you an idea of how much money we're dealing with. Anywhere from $400,000 up to $3.6 million in a month. And that's basically what we do in the Town Clerk's office. Anything that walks in the door, we deal with and take in all the money.
Looks, the motor vehicle registrations is interesting. It's fairly steady. About 600, average is about 600 or so every month.
Yeah, and you can see where it goes up to almost 900 in May. It must be all those Memorial Day sales.
Bad in tax returns.
Oh, very true. Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions for Patty about the Town Clerk's office?
No.
Is, I haven't heard any complaints?
No.
Is...
I have, but we deal with them.
Uh-huh. They haven't made it up this far, I guess.
Right. Which is a good thing.
So, thank you. Is, you know, is things are running well. Is, you know, I'm sure that, as you said, I'm sure that there are some complaints, but is, most of them seem to be minor.
Yes.
So...
If they weren't, you would hear about them, but they're mostly dealt with at my level, and if not, I bring them right up to Steve.
I get to deal with them.
Yep.
People are pretty cordial, pretty friendly here. They don't complain. They just want to be heard if there's anything.
Right, absolutely.
They're good listeners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Can you take John out of...
He's next anyway.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, well.
And next is the introduction to Finance Director.
I told him you wouldn't be too tough on him.
Is, you know, is, welcome. Is, I've met you up at the stairs a couple of times, you know, is, and I understand you like to be called Jack rather than John.
Yeah, that's fine.
As we'll get that out there right now, so is, tell us a little bit about yourself. Not all the members have met you, and nobody in the public has really either, so...
All right. I mainly grew, I moved around a lot when I was younger. I mainly grew up in upstate New York, near Utica, Utica, New York. After college, I moved to the Boston area, and I've lived and worked in and around Boston for 20 to 25 years. And when I got married, I moved to Worcester area, and where my wife is from. And I've generally worked in collegiate settings. I worked at Northeastern University in Boston, all kind of in accounting roles. And then I worked for College of Holy Cross for another 10 years there, which brings me here.
Questions?
Quite a change in role, I would imagine, from the Boston area coming to a little town like Burwick.
Yes. You know, actually, it was kind of a change going from Boston to Worcester area.
Oh, I'm sure.
A little change, but, but I mean, I'm originally from a small town myself, a town, Clinton, New York. I don't know if anyone would be familiar with that. Hamilton College is there. Then you got, you have Colgate, which is in Hamilton, New York. Everyone always confuses it. But, yeah, there's not, not a, not too much going on up in central New York, up there.
Well, I have to say, we're certainly happy to have you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for taking the position.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments?
Nope.
Thank you, Jack.
Welcome aboard.
Hopefully, many years of work with you.
We'll keep him for 10 anyway. It seems to be his track record, so...
Oh, good. 10 years, I might be out of here.
Yeah, exactly.
Is, brings us to unfinished business. Is, we have none. Is, I want to take a moment at this time. Is, in the audience, we have several high school students here, you know, watching our, our meeting, you know, for their, you know, school assignments. I want to ask you if there are any questions that you have, or anything.
Put you on the spot there.
Yeah. Is, you know, nope. No.
No.
Well...
Normally, we're a group of five Selectmen.
Right. Yeah, we typically, as five Selectmen, is two are excused. Is, by having three here, we have a quorum, so we can do official business, you know. But as you heard, when we're discussing the last minute, the last meeting's minutes, is we didn't have a quorum, you know, available to okay those, because Ken was not at that meeting. He couldn't participate in okaying the minutes, so is, this is a fairly simple, quick meeting this time. Is, we usually do have a lot of other business.
Yeah.
Is, so, welcome to our meeting. Is, I'm glad you're down here. Is, and I know the Town Manager was talking to you earlier about, you know, pursuing careers in public service. Is, it's not a bad job, most of the time, so...
There's a lot of scholarship money out there right now, focusing in that direction, because there's a lack of people who are in the public administration area. So, if you're interested, that's certainly a field to venture into.
It pays competitively, so, especially Southern Maine, so... Not, not all of them, is, jobs are as glamorous as the Town Manager's, you know, so, is, but there are a lot of other...
How glamorous is it?
There are a lot of other, you know, positions available in town government, you know, town planners, is, you know, finance directors, town clerks, things like that. And, you know, is, you know, we've been going, having a hard time, you know, filling positions, you know, so it'd be a good time for, you know, you and your fellow students to, you know, take a serious look at it, so... It brings us to our Town Manager's report.
I have started the bond application for the new fire station and police department renovations. That application is due by February 13. Letting Jack get settled in a little bit, so he doesn't have to worry too much about that. Proceeds, once it's approved, will be available May 23. We have a meeting scheduled for the committee to start looking at the design on the 27th at 1:00 p.m. I think that's a Thursday. And the architect will be here, Andy, from Port City. And we'll start getting to fine tuning of what we're looking at, and how it will fit on the Esterbrook site, if that's what you choose. That's going to be an interesting discussion. I have reached out, once again this week, to Prime Tanning, Mark Cahya, and I've not heard a word, nor do I expect to. We got notice last week that our health insurance has increased by 4%. It's on a calendar year. I think Maureen and I anticipated eight, so we should be in pretty good shape. I'll go back and look at my budget numbers. And again, congrats to Patty and her crew. They did a great job, kept people moving. It's pretty difficult when you have different ballots. Had a lot of new registrations. I, we don't have the count on that yet, do we?
No, I'll have it tomorrow.
And also, my hat's off to Kim and her crew at Recreation. They had an amazing number of people here for the trunk and tree, and also saw a lot of the fire, Police Department here, which was nice. We had offices around, about four or five of them, so keeping an eye on things. Pretty boring, actually, but a lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of parents. When we get down to the budget discussion, we'll talk more about that and get some ideas of what your thoughts are. And that's all I have.
Good. Selectmen's communication is all I have, is a letter from our Town Manager to South Borough Town Council, you know, thanking them for 30-plus years of providing dispatch service for us. You know, we worked well together, and transition over to the Sanford Regional is working well.
Yeah, worked really well. It's been, no complaints.
That brings us to accounts payable. We have a AP warrant, 1-9-1-7, from October 25, 2018, for the amount of $88,692.28. A water warrant, 0-9-1-7, from October 25, 2018, the amount of $132.87. The account payable warrant, 1-9-1-8, from November 1, 2018, and this is one with the school payment in it, $801,196.26. Water warrant, 0-9-1-8, from November 1, 2018, for the amount of $7,189.51. We have a payroll warrant, 1-9-1-8, from November 1, 2018, for the amount of $49,555.92. Account payable warrant, 1-9-1-9, from November 8, 2018, for the amount of $74,222. We have a water warrant, 0-9-1-9, from November 8, 2018, for the amount of $471.52. Payroll warrant, 1-9-1-9, from November 8, 2018, for the amount of $53,211.26. And payroll warrant, 1-9-2-0, for November 15, 2018, for the amount of $51,396.35. I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That brings us to new business. Fire station discussion.
Location. Location, location.
Esterbrook.
You have to vote.
Yep.
Make it official.
I think the people voted and made it official.
Yeah. Yeah. Is, I'll read off the totals one more time. Is, the Cemetery Road had 1,105 votes, and the Esterbrook site had 1,634 votes. Is, a little over 500 vote difference. Is, I think the people in town have spoken. Is, I think we can make it work there. And so, I will make a motion that we put the proposed new fire station at the Esterbrook site.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Any more you want to discuss on that right now?
That's it.
That's it?
More to come.
We're moving forward.
More to come.
More to come.
More to come, yeah. We'll come up with final designs, hopefully. I told the Bond Bank and Andy from Port City that we need to have bids out sometime in February, so they, the clock is ticking. And so I have some idea of costs coming in by March, is what they would like to see. So, we'll see what we get, but that's all.
And now, the budget discussion.
We're getting ready to do the budget for 2019, 2020. Couple of things to keep in mind. We have contract negotiations coming up with the Teamsters. I've thrown out some dates in January.
That the general employees?
That's the general employees. That involves Public Works, Fire, Office Staff, and the Water Department. We have a new union agent, which makes it more interesting, but we'll be sending some stuff off to Lynda McGill, just to review the contract and give us some ideas, recommendations that she might think we need to make. And Lisa and I have gone through parts of it, and also have found areas that we thought, mostly language changes. They'll be requesting increases, I'm sure, and those are things that we will discuss in executive session, once their requests are on the table. The other things is for the non-union employees, you need to think about what you would like to add for increases, if there's going to be any, for wages. And also, the big projects I have planned for this year, coming year, are roads. We have to really start investing in our roads. It's going to be very quiet on the equipment end.
I was going to say, no big equipment.
No big equipment this year. I hope Robert's listening. Hello, Robert. He, we got our loader in, which is quite a nice rig, so they're happy with that.
May have a chance to use it on Friday, if we get snow.
I'm surprised they didn't use it, loading up with salt already, but, yeah, so those are things that you need to consider. I am going to be looking for a couple hundred thousand more than we usually have for roads. We've got to start investing more money, 500,000 and 600,000 for the next three to four years, to get some of these roads taken care of.
And we've been spending about 300...
We've only been spending, my first summer, well, my first year here, you spend about 400,000. And the last three years, you have budgeted around 340,000, 350,000, which doesn't get you very far.
Right. No, we, we need to spend at least, probably half a million, minimum.
Minimum. I've got a PowerPoint presentation I'm working on, that I'll show, so the public gets to see the conditions of the roads. And I've, Robert and I have reworked the whole five-year capital plan, and we're attacking the worst roads, and I think we can get quite a bit done. But Pine Hill is one of them, and Worcester, and now, now we're not going to Cemetery. We'll look at Cemetery Road as well.
On a subject of road, did we happen to finish the other two?
No. I told them not to do it.
Okay.
They're going to, they're going to pave over where they cut into the, where the butt joints would be. We'll have them finish up that, and wait till next year, so we won't spend any more money.
Too cold.
Yeah, it's, it got cold pretty quick, and so we're, we're done, so...
Is that Diamond Hill?
Excuse me?
Was that Diamond?
We're done with Diamond Hill. The only roads that we were scheduled to do were the Pond Road and Beach Ridge. And, and they just took on too much work. They couldn't get to it. They, I think they went after the bigger projects they had to get done, and...
They're going to do it for the same price next year.
Yeah. Yes, they will.
That's, they better.
So, yeah.
Yeah, you know, talk about them overbooking themselves. They're still doing work in, on roads in Kennebunk.
Yeah, they're not, not a good idea. But I, once it gets below 50, I don't like paving. I've seen roads come apart that have been laid down, so... Otherwise, I don't have any other big items that need to be done. We do need to do something with the auditorium floor. That is being worn down, pretty much. We had people in this spring, they gave us some prices. The two people that came in, none of them recommend sanding and do any more on a floor, so it's either we take the wax off it, which our cleaning person can do, and then we'll just put a coat of poly, heavy gymnasium poly. Otherwise, one guy, one of the contractors really recommended looking down the road and planning to replace the wood, because it's 1938.
1938, yeah.
So, it's, might be time.
Well, I, I think we need to take care of the heating system and the electrical system first.
Yeah, we still have one more stage on the electrical system to do, and that will complete that update. And the heating system, we, the company that we were using, Eastern Mechanical, out of Biddeford, was bought out by a company called Pine State Services out of Westbrook, and I was told by Eastern Mechanical, they're very good. And so far, we've had a really good experience with them. So, we'll talk more. They don't seem to feel that we need to replace a lot of the piping. A lot of it, they feel that we just need to, on a regular basis, drain the pipes, so the rust can flush itself out, and we should be okay. So, hopefully, we have no more breaks that way.
Right, yeah.
And the other thing we have to look at down the road is an elevator. That's another big item, you know, 150 plus, because our lift here is running out of parts. You can't find parts for it. It's still working, right? So, but, we're going to need that accessibility. So, once we decide, I'll start looking for grants. There may be some handicap accessible grants out there from different agencies. Otherwise, that's it for the budget. One last thing I didn't mention in my report is, we did meet with Senator Collins' staff person. They wanted to see what was going on in Burwick. And Terry and I met with them. I wanted her, as part of that discussion, to talk about the FCC and what's going on with Spectrum and all the other cable industries. I don't think she was expecting that too much, but she had an earful when she took notes. And also about some of the other items that are going on down in Washington and in the state. So, we'll see how they, how they listen, what they can do to help us. That's all I have. That's it.
We have no quick claim deeds and installment contracts, no abatements of supplementals. Is second public comment. Second public comment open. Anybody who wants to comment? Step to the podium. Going once, going twice? I, I will say something during the public comment here, is I want to thank everybody, you know, that supported me in my run for the Senate. Is, I fell a little bit short of it, but that just means I have more time to spend here and get into trouble in town, I guess, so. Is, I want to thank everybody, and is congratulate my opponent, Bob Foley, for winning, and I'm sure he'll do a lot of good work for Burwick. So... We have no executive session. Other business and non-agenda, agenda items?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Sure.
Record.
Who won? Record, who won?